Chester. I could be interrupted by a movie stream. You want to go ahead with Chester now? We'll move right into our discussion with Chester.
Yeah.
All right. We have the Chester Board of Sockman Lewis. Chief of Police. I guess that's some reason for this was to discuss our joint police department. Which is involved with Cheryl, will you want to open something?
Sure, we can do that. First of all, thanks for hosting us. We appreciate it and you guys are welcome to come see us next time, but that's okay. I just wanted to say from my personal perspective and the other board members can comment that I think that this is one of the most successful joint venture projects that has been undertaken. Anywhere frankly, I think this went almost seamlessly and I haven't had anything but high praise from the amount of work that's being done. And the interaction with the public citizen. So I for one want to thank you for the good work and we want to keep moving moving forward in the same direction.
Anyone else want to comment? I agree that you're doing a hell of a good job.
Thank you.
But now we have something that we've got to address right here and I would like you to. Give us a little bit of information on it.
Absolutely. I don't know first, I was told this was also going to be my six month review. So I had sent it up, so I've been keeping track of the things that I have been doing within the department. And I wanted to hand that out if I could.
Sure.
And then we can discuss that and then we can get into the nitty gritty for the email that I sent out. I only have so many, I didn't know that we were going to have. The Karen's not here.
You go.
Oh, all right, you handed one off, I'll pick that one back. So I just broke this up into categories as you can see, some of the things that I've been doing. Over the last six months. I don't know if anyone has any questions on this as you guys are looking it over, but I've been pretty busy. Which will correlate into the email that I sent out to the boards on Saturday. There hasn't been a lot of time for patrol for myself. Because there was a lot of things that needed to be upgraded. Changed out and brought up to date. And that's what I've been spending the last six months on and probably the next six months. I've been running basically since I've gotten the position of chief, I ran with two officers basically for four out of the six months. In June, I hired a third officer. And she was but. Clear to be on her own. Right around the time that Sergeant O'Brien retired, which then put me back at two officers. So essentially, other than the training hours for Officer Kate Perez, oh, I've had two officers. I now have four. I'm hoping by the end of this month that they will be trained and able to go out on their own. They both have considerable police experience. So it's a matter of them learning our roads and how we navigate the police world. I've also been purchasing some ammo for all the firearms people out there. We know that firearms and ammo are shortage. The same with law enforcement, it's hard to come by. So I've been trying to get that up to date. I only had about four boxes of practice pistol ammo when I started. We have much more than that now. Due to the police reform. We had to upload all of our trainings that we've done, especially over the last year into a cadence. I had to do that for each of my officers. And it was a massive amount of work. Anything that wasn't done through the MPTC had to be scanned in, the certificate scanned in and entered. For each of my officers, I was the only one that could do that as an administrator. So that was hours upon hours in June. To make sure that all the records were in and up to date by June 30th, or there was a possibility that our officer wouldn't be able to recertify. And continue to work as a police officer. Thankfully, everyone got in and recertified. There were unused portable radios in both departments Chester and Blanford. And I was able to give those to the respective fire departments in each town, which both fire chiefs were quite sad about. I think I gave Chester six portable radios with spare batteries and chargers. And the Blanford Fire Chief, I was able to give him 10 unused radios with batteries and chargers, which supplemented them and then further helped them not have to purchase. They were all in working order. But what had happened is is we went to the dual band radios, so we were no longer using the radios at the fire departments news, which I believe is a single band. So that was one thing that I had done. Blanford, we held a successful drug takeback in April. Margaret had come to me, our consultant agent, saying, I'd really love to do this. We've been trying for several years and it hasn't come forward, come through. So we were able to hold the event and we collected 49 pounds of unwanted medication and that is going to be, it was destroyed. And wasn't out in our water sources and our, you know, kids and on the street. I'm also. Have been able to obtain a permanent kiosk, but take that kiosk for the Blanford Police Department, which I'm hoping should be here sometime this month. So that'll be a positive for the Blanford residents. And the rest of it's pretty self explanatory. Is there any questions or comments?
Yeah, Tammy, can you talk a little bit about, you know, I know this is a very unusual time with this police reform. It's gone through and I know that you're spending an awful lot of time on policies and procedures and having update that. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So when I took over, we had approximately in the department about six policies that were cookie cutter from the Massachusetts Police. What I've done is reached out to Chief Jen Gunnarson himself, Howdy Police. She's working on getting her department accredited. So I know that her policies are up to date and where they need to be. So I've obtained her policies. And are rewriting them to fit the Chester Blanford Department. And I'm working on that. I have currently, I believe, five policies out because they take an enormous amount of time to read and reread my use of force policy along this 29 pages. So working on getting that in place with the reform bill. Policies had this have worded wording added or deleted depending on the policy. It's it's been crazy. There's been a lot of. Chief meetings that I attend monthly between the Western Massachusetts Police and the Mass Chiefs of Police. We're all trying to figure out what's going to happen with the police reform and what's going to be happening with this so called Bridge Academy. And for you that don't know, the Bridge Academy. Massachusetts is going to a post police academy, which is essentially the full time police academy currently in Mass. Prior to July 1, we had two academies. We had a part time reserve academy that would allow officers to work part time. Once they became full time, they'd have to obtain a full time police academy status. There are, there's talk and we're hoping that they're going to accept what we're calling a bridge academy. That's going to bring our part time trained officers. Over to a full time academy, trained certificate and status. The Mass Chiefs of Police. And the MPTC, which is our training council for the police academy in Massachusetts, was hoping that it'd be about a 200 hour academy. The latest conversations with the police post commission, which was formed when the police reform went through. Was talking about 370 hours. So we're all kind of holding our breasts and waiting to see what's going to happen as these talks continue. I have a meeting coming up. Another two weeks, I think, and hopefully we'll get some more information. So this reform has been and going to be. I think it's going to affect the small towns pretty harshly as far as financially between. Paying the salaries of the officers to get trained and also ammunition. They're looking at, I've heard between 1,000 and 1,500 rounds of just pistol ammo. And right now, a case of ammo for me is about $300, I believe. Just for a case of ammo of 1,000 rounds. So that's kind of where we're at with the reform and that's really, I don't have much more on the reform. There's not much more coming forward.
But it's fair to say then that it's a very uncertain time and we really don't know what's going to happen going forward and. At the very least, there's going to be financial impact on training and equipment costs.
Yes. So on to the emails. Everyone have a copy of that email that I sent out? I made copies.
Yeah.
So I picked this time, I wanted to send this email out to everybody so they'd have time to digest it. Because I know that what I'm asking for, there's a, you know, a large sum of money. But after go, I hadn't realized going through the financial process with my first finance budget meeting was six days after I was put in as chief. I had no idea. About the budget and so. Literally it was six days and I was, I don't know. So but now having been here six months, I have a much better handle on what I think I need and. How the budget works and I'm, a lot of my stress and what's keeping me up at night lately is my officer patrol budget. I have four officers right now. I would love to hire one to two more. So we can spread out the work and no one's going to get burned out on me because these officers have full time jobs. What they do for us is part time. And as it's listed there, I laid it out. I currently have 32,100 that was. Given as FY 22 officer wages. And I don't know if you guys want me to go into each item, but I laid out the training. In previous years, I know the training budget was about $4,000. It was zeroed out prior to me taking over. And the issue is that to recertify every officer, I need about $4,200 a year for four, that's for four officers. That's my current officer. And each officer is just going to go up. They need to have 40 hours of in-service training plus eight hours of firearms training. They need two trainings of firearms a year. One is the qualification where you go out and shoot for score and accuracy. And then another one is either they're going to do low light training and or decision making. You usually alternate those year by year. The firearms training has not been happening. Before. Last July, the police department had not qualified in seven years, which is a violation of the training standards in Massachusetts. So. I, these numbers are a bit higher than what you're used to looking at because I'm bringing the department to where it needs to be training wise. There are a couple of officers that work for dual departments. I don't know how it was going to work with the in-service training. Here, I just wrote it out as if I, you know, my department has to fund this. My intent is to reach out to the other departments that they work for and say, how are we going to do this? Because I don't believe that the Chester Blanford Police Department. Should have to pay the way all these 40 hours of training, 48 hours of training. And they need to get the same training throughout their, all their departments. So. But these numbers that are listed in front of you are based on the Chester Blanford Police Department having to pay for the officers. So I had talked about the Bridge Academy this year. They're sending, they're having officers recertified based on the first letter of their last name, Officer Grislack, because A through H is this year, they have until June 30th of 22 to recertify and take the Bridge Academy. Officer Grislack will have to go through the Bridge Academy this year and I'm trying to look and see where my. Where I had it in here. So if it's a 200 hour academy, just to pay Officer Grislack salaries for $4,400. If it goes to the 370, it's $8,140. And if it's any number in between, obviously you're smarter enough, it's going to be somewhere in between. I have no idea. Worst case scenario, if it's the $8,000, that's a quarter of my budget. And then right now, with the $32,100 that I have for my patrol budget, that's also my training budget. And if you. Forget about the training for a minute and you only think about patrol hours, that's with the 32,000, that would allow me 28 hours a week for my officers patrol or 14 hours per town. Once you start taking out the training hours, the potential eight grand, four to eight grand for Officer Grislack. And then the training, the 4,200 for the, the training that is absolutely required. It's the minimum amount. We have to do that to keep these officers certified. Our numbers drop to about, I believe it was, I forget, 23 to 24 hours a week. If there's no other training, which equals about 11 to 12 hours of patrol. Per town. So I'm asking the department because for an additional 42,000, the towns for an additional 42,000. For FY 21, the patrol budget was $90,000. I averaged that Chief L Nicky worked approximately 12 hours a week and at $25 an hour. Made about 15,600 in a year. That's a guesstimate of what he did, but that's what he told me. He worked about 12 hours. So that would leave 74,400 in my patrol budget. I understand that when the towns decided to make a full time chief. They thought they were getting 40 hours of patrol a week from the police chief. That's not happening. I'm averaging one to two hours a week. Some weeks, some weeks I'm not out at all. I answer calls, emergency calls when I'm working or getting answered if I'm in town. I went out today for 45 minutes before this meeting and I drove around town of Blanford. But I'm not getting out because of the administrative work, because of the things that I just handed out that I've been working on and doing and they had, some of these things take weeks to do. Some of them are pretty easy, but a lot of them are just time consuming. So I don't know if when the towns decided to hire a full time chief, that they thought I was going to be able to patrol for 36, 40 hours. It's not happening. So what's happening is I'm reading on Facebook and hearing from the towns, from the town people, both Chester and Blanford. Are upset that they don't see their cruisers and their police chief. I don't respond to that. If someone wants to come to me, I had one woman from Chester come and have a conversation with me and I was very frank with her. I said, ma'am. For the last five months, I've had two officers. One works evenings, one works days. If you don't see them, you don't see them, but it was about two days a week that I would have coverage, maybe three. I'm hoping with these four officers, I can bring the hours up, but it's only going to allow me, as of right now with my budget. To have one of them each work one five hour shift a week. So it's four days of coverage that I'd be able to do. And then with the training, I'm guesstimating that by January or February, I'm going to be out of patrol money. So that means for the remainder of the fiscal year, there'll be no patrols. Other than me when I have the time. When I had asked for more money in my budget, when I was premature, didn't know what I was doing, I was told, asked, did crime go up? The answer is no, crime hasn't gone up to my knowledge. And then they, I was told, well, we have state police. I had a conversation with trooper. Last Sunday at an event and asked him, how many towns of state police, the Russell Barracks, which is D5 who backs us up. How many troopers are on at a shift? And he told me two. And a desk trooper. And then he told me that they cover 11 towns. So relying on state police is a gamble because if you have a loved one that needs medical attention. If you get a call from your neighbor, hey, somebody's breaking into your house. If there isn't a Chester Blanford Police Officer on, you could be waiting hours because if those two troopers are tied up somewhere else, they're not coming. Because they can't, because they, if they're on, they're tied up. If they're not tied up, depending on where they are, they might be 45 minutes away from. Getting to your house or getting to your loved one who's in need. I want to have, I'm asking for this additional 42,000 to be added to my patrol officer wages. So I can put the officers, our officers, our patch, our department on the street. And get them out there to better serve the communities and to protect. You know, all of you and get you out. I don't, I, I know it seems like a lot, but I'm literally, I'm asking for the same money. That was in the patrol budget last year. Minus Chief L Nicky's pay, which came out. That's all what I'm asking for at this time.
Have you submitted this to the respective financial?
I have not. I started with the select boards because I knew that we were having this meeting tonight.
Have you got a submission for the two select boards?
My submission was my email. If there's a specific form, I do not.
Well, I didn't see the email, I'm sorry, but.
I will.
All I'm trying to do is. Get it. Recognized. You're requesting X amount of money from each community to make this up. So that we can talk with our finance and they can talk with theirs.
Right.
And see what we can do with it.
So I would say that my email, if it suffices, would be my official request and I would be asking for approximately 21,000 per town. In addition.
So Tammy, just some background here and that's kind of why I brought up the police reform thing. You, you had a, you have a perfect storm of situations that happened. We, we came through COVID. Which was a nightmare for everyone and this police reform thing. I don't think we, any of us know what the real repercussions are going to be, other than it's been extremely damaging for law enforcement. And I do know that the amount of time that you're spending on this and you're going to continue to have to spend on this is astronomical. So I'm, I'm not surprised by the patrol hours and you know, frankly, when we all met to put this together, I think we knew. Going in that we were going to have to evaluate this and then probably look at different funding for it. So. I'm, I'm not surprised by this and I think your presentation is, is accurate and I think it's, I think it's. It's, it's not out of line. I think it's something that we, we need to fund. And you know, I've been, I've been thinking about it here and I think that. You know, one thing we may be able to do because some of these, some of these costs are going to be one time costs because you're, you're Bridge Academy training type of things. Those are going to be one time costs. And both Blanford and Chester have, I know we have ARPA funding coming in that we may be able to look at pulling something out of that that we don't have to go to. We wouldn't have to go to town meeting or, or tax rate or anything else. So it's something that we, we could consider, but you know, me personally, I, I understand where you're coming from and I support this.
I have a couple of questions if I can. Do you foresee your role being primarily administrative beyond the next six months?
My hope is not. I'm, I miss being out there on the street patrolling. Absolutely, you know, so I don't want to be tied to the desk. So my hope is in the next six months. Year that once I have policies and procedures in place. Once we're through and we finally know what's going on with the Bridge Academy and my officers are completely trained and where they need to be, that I'm hoping that is going to settle down. Because right now that's a lot of what I'm doing. But honestly, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because there's day to day, you know, I am going to attempt to get an intern from Westwood State College or University, sorry, Westwood State University. I went to college. To help me with some of the monotonous stuff that I'm, you know, doing that they could do for me. And it helps them get credits. So I am hoping that, you know, that would help. So my goal is, is that yes, in six to 12 months, that yeah, that I would be able to patrol, but. I don't know.
Yeah, they're not knowing. So I'm bound to follow this to the next fiscal year. But you're right, if we're sitting down here in six months and let's say. Our representatives come through for us and we don't have to do this reform. I know.
Yes.
Making a big guess there, but say they come through and we don't have to do it. The bridge academy works. It's a minimal amount. And we get through it for the next fiscal year. Are we going to stick with this additional 42? Plus now you are going to have additional patrol hours? Is that what the plan is or will we revisit and hopefully maybe relocate at that time?
Yeah, I, my end game in this is to continue to hire officer and officers and to offer. More and more coverage for the towns. I have two towns that I cover and I would. Love to see down the road and this is where my aim would be, is to have two officers on. From seven in the morning to 11 at night. Obviously, there'd be two shifts there, but. To cover our town during waking hours. That's my end game. So. Yeah, I probably will be asking for the same monies next year. So I can continue to hire officers. So I can continue to offer patrol hours and time.
And that leads into my next question, which is where, where is the end? The end goal here, you mentioned adequate police services. My question was, what, what would you determine to be adequate?
Just what I said, I think that the adequate, the adequate, the end is my end game, is to have an officer on from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Two shifts, two officers a day, seven days a week.
Trying to do the math as you say.
The town of Bramble, I try, I talk with Chief Adels often and he started where we're at with what, he's one town. But he's now seven days a week, an officer works the seven to three, three to 11. State Police only covers the overnight hours, which I think is reasonable here. So that would be for me, that's adequate. And that's where I would like to see us going.
And actually, when we did this study, I think those were questions that we asked then too. And. That is pretty consistent with the end game that we had discussed is, I, I think everybody realized the state police are a great agency. They do a great job, but there's not enough of them. To cover what we have and there's not going to be. I mean, that's not going to change. So that's why we took the step in this direction and I think, I think this is, it's reasonable and. You know, it's well thought out.
And on that note, state police have been attending our chief meetings because they are very nervous with two troopers on the street. And as a bridge academy happens and starts going into effect, there's officers that are not going to go through the academy. So especially the small hill towns up here that we're going to be losing seasoned, experienced officers. There's police chiefs that are going to have to go through this bridge academy. So if they work during the day. They're now going to have to be attending a police academy of some sort. I don't know what it's going to look like, but that's just going to tax our state police further. So because there's going to be more, the more coverage and more towns that they're going to have to work hard. Where normally a chief or an officer would be there, they're not going to be there.
So these training hours are in addition to their detail hours? So my understanding.
The detail hours is voluntary. That may, well, not voluntary, but that's.
I think he means patrol hours.
Patrol hours, sorry.
It's, yes, it's in addition to.
It's in addition to.
Yes. Yeah, that's the minimum hours that they have to remain certified to be a police officer. And right now that's coming out of the. The salaries, the wages.
Now you had mentioned certifications for these officers. Now, once you're certified. What, what's the timeline between certification and then having to go to re-certify?
So we have to recertify every year.
Every year.
Every year. So Officer Grislack, my understanding right now. And that's subject to change, but the way it's always been is that if he goes to the academy this year, he will not have to do the additional 40 hours of what we call in-service training. The eight hours of qualification, firearms qualification, he will do because we're going to be doing it either this month or next. So we're already going to have that in place. But the in-service training he will not have to do, he'll, because he'll be getting that at the Bridge Academy. But every year we have to do these hours.
Okay, so. Like what, what does it cost for the recertification of the officers? Like you say, every year, all right, now. We're paying for that or the state pays for it or now this becomes an obash. About what you're, you're slated to.
Right, so the in-service doesn't cost anything per se to do. A lot of it right now is virtual because of COVID. So we're paying their hours that they're, they're doing to do the training. So it's very specific. They'll give you. Bias training is three hours. And then there's a video that's pretty close to three hours long that they have to sit and watch and they take tests and they get sort of certificates. Once they submit those certificates, I mean, they'll get paid out for the hours.
Yeah, but at some point, like if they reopen the academies and they have to go over the academies, now that's going to add to the costs or?
It'll be the same cost. We would just send them to the academy to do the training, but they're going to, it's going to be the same amount of hours and we would still continue to pay them their salary.
Three hours in front of a computer, that's beyond my attention.
So really it's, it's 40 hours a week per officer, so.
Yeah.
So you're looking with the $888 roughly.
Right, yeah. Our, my officers are getting plates with dollars an hour. So times.
I was trying to get a better understanding of. You know, that.
Karen, the officers that you were speaking of work full time, right, the senate for other communities and part time for us?
They work full time. Other, like one of my officers is a teacher, full time.
Oh, but not a police.
But not a police, so one of my officers is a full time police officer for another community. The other three are all part time and have other careers.
So would that one officer use full time elsewhere be able to pay back the training for both towns?
Yes, so they only have to do the training once and right now, not sure how that's going to work. Yes, so they only have to do the training once, and right now, not sure how that's going to work. I'm planning on having in the next week or two, another department meeting. To talk with the officers and then get a feel, especially for her, because she's full-time. I'm assuming her full-time job is going to give her that. This was the worst case, like, if we had to pay it all, this is the worst case. The other two, three office, well, Boss Grislock only works for us, so the other two that work multiple agencies. My intent is to reach out to their chiefs to see how we're going to go about doing this, so that we don't have to eat the entire cost. Of the training, because they have to do it, you know, for them as well.
Thank you.
Well, I think you did a good presentation, and as Tom said, we can now go back and discuss amongst ourselves and. Say with finance and come up with with solutions, but. I know that it's critical, and as far as I'm concerned, as I said, I support this.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't think so.
I only, the only thing I wanted to bring up quick was, I handed out with the letter from chief. It's the financials. And basically. We have three. Expenses in question that. Our accountant is working on right now, and it's just a question of whether money had been appropriated. Why it wasn't brought over, but that's our. But minus that, currently, we work at a, we have a four hundred and forty-eight dollar and thirty-eight cent. Split between the two towns. So, that's a good way to run a budget. Right there. But we have this, like I say, these three other that we're working on and.
That's good.
But all the financials are there. You can, if anybody has any questions, instead of reading through this right now, because it can be mind-boggling. Please email me or Josh, and you can email me, and we'll get the answers for you.
Looks good, okay. Now, again, I just want to reiterate, when we went through this whole process, we knew that there was going to be difficulties. Moving forward, and nobody could anticipate COVID, and then this ridiculous police reform thing. So I, Tammy, I appreciate you being as flexible as you have, and the work that you're doing, because this is, you're in uncharted water. Nobody has ever seen this before, nobody's ever done this before, so just try and keep your head above water and stay with it, it's not an easy job, so thank you for doing it. We want to discuss something else, right?
Right, um, we were. Right, the communication piece.
Okay.
That you would want to discuss.
So. I, I don't know what day that was, but it was a Sunday evening around nine thirty, I got a call from Kathy. Advising me that the town of Chester was under a state of emergency. And it was during all the rain that we got, and. I asked her why. I had no idea, I had not been contacted by anybody, I hadn't been reached out, dispatch should not reached out to me, so I didn't know that we were losing roads. I had no idea. And then I found out later through the days that our highway, obviously, had, Chester Highway had been out, and our. Members of the fire department had been out. And I was a little disappointed and taken aback that, as the police chief, that I wasn't notified. And I spoke with the fire chief, and I said, why wasn't I notified? I asked Kathy the same thing, and she didn't have an answer, which I wouldn't have expected her to. So I wanted to have both fire chiefs and both highway supers here, thank you, Dave, I appreciate you being here. To have a conversation and say, we're all on the same team, police, fire, EMS, highway. Our job is public safety. We have different aspects of it, but we all wear the same uniform and have the same job. So I wanted to have a conversation today with the other departments head, department heads, and say, how can we? Make the communication work better for the two towns. Josh, in the past, we had some severe storms coming through, sent out a group text that included all the department heads and Kara, the head of the chair. Slapboard, so if anything happened, we knew that we were putting it on that. Text group, and that everyone that needed to know would instantly be brought up to speed and know what's going on and where and what it is. I was frustrated and disappointed that nobody thought to reach out to the police chief. Because what if I had gotten a call from dispatch saying, you need to respond to this address for whatever, and I can't get there? Because I don't know that we don't, our roads are washing away. Now, part of that should have been, I should have known. I've been chief for six months and on the department for about fourteen, and I haven't heard in the last fourteen months of any of our roads washing out. So I wasn't familiar with it, I didn't grow up in Chester, I, I didn't know the state of our roads. So part of that is my fault, I I should have educated myself. But I feel strongly that it was also on the department heads, the fire chief, the highway, somebody should have notified, send me a text message. This is what's going on, this road is impassable, we have people trapped, they can't get out of their houses, we can't get to them. This road is washing away, we just lost half the skyline trail. Something, something, so that's why I wanted this meeting to say, what can we do? It can be as simple as a text message group. That we can just keep on our phones, that when we know if, in a certain town, if we're, something's going down, let's notify. Let's work together, I had told the fire chief in Chester, I said, why didn't you call me? I just hired two new officers, I've got a total of four myself, we can go grab our cruisers, now we can provide lights for safety. And it's not above us to put our boots on and a pair of jeans and go out and dig trenches, or lay sandbags, or do whatever it is, or drag brush out of the road. What have you, we're all on the same team, so that's why I wanted to have this meeting. And to reach out and say, let's throw ideas on the table, have better communication, because in two thousand twenty-one. In my opinion, the police chief shouldn't be being left out of disasters happening in my community.
You're right, and I think maybe the easiest solution is a text group. I mean, if that's, you've already got one started in Blanford, if you do that, maybe go out and do the same thing. In Chester, maybe we put it all together, so that everybody gets notified.
The other thing too is, I know. Chief Mother, Fire Chief, has been, before COVID happened. And then, obviously, things got re-prioritized, but had been actively working on trying to. Reactivate on the emergency preparedness group, I guess, for part of a regional. Preparedness, and part of that, the responsibility of that group is to put together. Emergency plans when disasters happen. And there's, you know, a defined set of steps that neither that are required in order to establish a. A qualified emergency, you know. And he was actively working, working, and then we learned we're a part of a regional group, he was going to re-engage that, start moving in that direction, leverage whatever. Meanwhile, consultants there might be to help navigate that, but I think. If they help us put together that document, it's more than just having a tangible document, it's about a plan we put in place in between with our going-to-be partners. To be sure that when these emergencies take place, we already know what to do, like start a text with your department, or whatever it may be.
Yeah.
It might be just getting Chief Mother back at the table, and and your fire chief as well, and say, hey, can we get rolling on this?
We actually have, we have a document, we have an emergency preparedness plan. Richie Smaller, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director, worked on several years ago with this group that you speak of, so we have it. But I know it's time to be updated, it hasn't been touched in a few years, so. You know, the text message group and all that's not in there, but that whole notification procedure, you should have been notified. You should have been notified by the Emergency Management Director, you absolutely should have been notified, so. That should have happened, but we'll, we'll have to figure out some steps so that that doesn't happen again.
Do it better next time.
Because you're right. I could have, I, I mean, I'm thinking about it myself, and we, we got together to do the state of emergency, we could have very easily.
I'll look at my crystal ball.
You and I have already talked some. Because I gave you my phone and you gave me yours, because during the evening where something happens here. It's mine, until I can get Dave up here from East Hampton. So that's why I keep in the communications open for you.
Absolutely.
That's critical anyway, and so that, that definitely fell through the cracks, and that's, you know, that's on us too, so, we need to get that updated. It was like Jason said, when we did the state of emergency, could have easily sent a text out to you too, and I just.
Like I said, it's not a blame game. Richie or anything, but it's just a more of, let's, let's move forward, because there was fear Sunday night. Kathy said, there's a possibility we may have to evacuate Walker. And I'm like, oh, so I'm now at nine thirty, quarter ten, I'm sending a text out to my officer saying, is there anybody available, anybody's. Thinking we may have, I'm going to need help.
We didn't know.
And thankfully, we didn't, and I had one of my officers coming in, and he did, he came in, but um, it's just one of those things, I can get the ball rolling on my end too.
No, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right, we'll, we'll work on fixing that.
Well, and where Tammy's the center of both communities.
Sure.
That it's, you know, if, whether it's you start the tasks, or even if. We have some rain, you go, hey, how's it, you know, everything okay? Just put, starting the group text to get it going, because we all know that emergence. The state puts out all the weather warnings.
Oh, yeah.
But they don't know for sure who's getting how much rain.
Yeah, they're all estimates.
Right, they're all estimates, so.
We'll work on that.
Anything else?
I think that's all we wanted to cover, right? Wow, well, perfect. We are going to move on to our. Whatever, whatever works, you know, we can, I don't mind coming here, but you guys are more to welcome come to Chester too. We'll extend our hospitality as well. Thank you, folks.
So, next we're joined.
We're going to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to. All right, hopefully it won't be long. Thank you, folks.
I said it's time to get back where it showed.
Just keep going down the agenda, you got a hearing next.
Yeah, I want to do the hearing and then go back to the previous meeting. All right, we have a, a hearing. From the power company. For identical or joint pole locations from N-Star. Doing business as ever, Source Energy in Verizon, New England. We have the plans here, resume, everybody, show them.
That's my stuff.
I would make a motion to. Except their, their plan and and sign it off. Not for the hearing, I think that's for the other stuff, isn't it? If they want to speak, yeah.
Artie, are you there with us? Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
All right, yep, I'm I'm here for EverSource, they hired my company TRC to do the engineering for this, so. We're proposing some new new poles along the route on North Blanford Road and Gore Road. And also on North Blanford Road, we're proposing to move some of the existing poles. Because that reduced the overall number of additional poles that we needed. So it's a little bit of a rearranging of the poles along there to, to create shorter distances between them overall. That's essentially the plan.
Any questions, T J? Oh, I I'm just wondering now. You said you're relocating some of the poles?
Yes.
So otherwise, they'll, they'll be in different locations along the street?
Correct, yeah, moving up and up and down the street.
As I understand this, this is to shorten the distance between several poles?
That's right, EverSource is is planning to to put in an additional circuit out of the substation on North Blanford Road, and. Would the existing distance between the poles, they wouldn't support in the sag between, the sag of the wire between the poles. At those distances would become an issue. So we're seeking to shorten that up, so it can accommodate this other circuit, which is meant to. It's to get the, the, the circuit that's there now goes through the woods, kind of behind the road, and it comes back out on Gore. They want to get that, so that's not the primary circuit, they want it on the street, which will be a lot more reliable and easier to maintain.
Anything else? No, no. Part of this says wait and maintain underground cables and wires, where where's that at?
Coming directly out of the substation about three hundred feet. Towards the the east along North, North Blanford Road, is that, that's where the digging would take place for for the underground.
Is that going to affect our roads or anything?
EverSource would would, yeah, there would, there would need to be a traffic detail while they did the work, and EverSource would patch the road. Wherever they dug it.
They're not, they're, you're not going to be digging up the road, they're going to be running alongside the road.
They'll have to cross the road at one point.
Yeah. Okay.
Have you discussed this with the highway superintendent and the water commissioner?
I have not had that conversation with the town, no.
Right, because you've got a water line to cross here.
Yeah, and and they'll be doing surveys and arranging all of that to make sure that, you know, there wouldn't be any. In the course of the construction that would all take place.
Courtney, your water superintendent, I got a question for you. I went out there with Mass Water Works, and we marked that road out about five months ago, we flagged it. Is that part of that initial project right there, what we did? Is that where you want to run that line, where we marked it?
I don't recall seeing marks.
Flags, you put flags up there because you requested flags, so there's little blue flags in the tall grass now. So because, when I spoke to your rep about that little deal, when you come out of that transfer station. Your magnetic field that you have coming out of there, we cannot locate the main there, because you you have, there's, there's too many. Interferences, so you're going to have to back truck that out, locate that main, because you have. A big cluster of of poles right outside that, and that's a twelve-inch main.
Okay, yeah, that would have been for this project, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that you had marked that out.
We marked all the way down North Main Street, and we marked down to Gore. I mean, not north, even, North Blanford to Gore, and we took a right on Gore back onto North Blanford Road again.
Okay, so, yeah, the underground would only be right outside of the substation, like I said, about three hundred feet. In the vicinity of the the substation. But, yeah, all all on the road to Gore, we'll be digging to place poles. I I don't believe that the water main is in the route that the poles are on, so that shouldn't be an issue, the only. Location where where they're going to have to, like you said, locate the line for for their digging for this project. Is right around the substation.
No, 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 you, if, if we're I marked, if you're going where the existing poles are, you are right on top of a twelve inch water main, our main line coming out of that plant.
Okay. I will have to take a look at that, um. The, the poles themselves can be shifted away or towards the road, um.
Our water line runs on the edge of the road, you need to ship farther off the road.
Okay, that will, yep, yeah, they'll, we'll construct it such as, as a way that it stays away from the water.
And now we'll, now we're worried, so McCarthy, if you can just, as you proceed forward, because we've gotten to these issues before where. You know, lines get broken and, and whatnot, if you could just be sure that you do. Communicate with the water department as well as the highway superintendent as well, and I would say if you're gonna be hiring detail. Communicate with the police chief and just be sure that everyone's on the same page, um, as you proceed forward with that project. If and when approved.
Yes, uh, we can, we can say that as a condition of the petition, um, that, you know, work would not proceed until. Uh, it was cleared with the town, if, if that's acceptable.
The other, the other question I have here is, cause. This is a petition for joint. For the pole locations from N star Electric Company, D B A EverSource Energy in Verizon, right?
That's right.
In this, uh, agreement, you want the select word signed, to sign, it says the Western Massachusetts Electric Company, is that? There, I'm assuming that's the same. Or is that different?
That's the same company, Western Mass Electric is the old name for N star and the territory that EverSource covers in Western Mass. I, I didn't create the legal document, I, I, I understand that that's confusing.
Wait, that doesn't void anything, right, there were not. That, that was an error, um.
That wouldn't be an error, that's probably, uh, copied and pasted from whoever at EverSource prepared that document for you, um. Yeah, I, I don't know why they haven't changed that, but. Western Mass Electric, N star and EverSource is all referencing the same company.
That's one project, we're gonna hold these one at a time.
Uh, that's up to you, Mr. Chairman, so you have three plans in front of you to approve, to review and approve or disapprove tonight. Specifically, plan number five zero two two seven two one, plan number five zero two three two one zero. Plan number five zero two three seven four five. Do you have a question from the town clerk's office?
If there is going to be a relocation involving the water line. If you approve of this tonight, we will need to have new documentation of the precise. Relocation of that particular pole so that we can appropriately record it. This is, this is what the town clerk's office does, and we also need to know who's gonna get the bill, why is it not? Um, EverSource letterhead, there are no certification pages for the town or EverSource or Verizon. So that's our issue, we, we'd really like to have a complete package. And I don't understand if EverSource prepared the paperwork, um. Usually when we get stuff from EverSource, Mr. McCarthy, it's, it's absolutely an apple pie order and very, very complete.
I understand, um, I'm trying to, I, I don't know how. EverSource provided this, the documents to you, I, I prepared the petition that I wanted to, you know, I, I prepared my, my design. And I, I gave that to EverSource and they would have prepared the petition documents. And provided those to you, so I think maybe there was. I, I can't answer for that step of the process where they actually prepared, prepared those things and gave them to you, I was under the impression that they gave you what I prepared.
We, we only got from you, I, as I understand, is that right, Josh? Whatever he sent you is what we got. I have, we have nothing really from EverSource.
Well, so Susan emailed me documents, traditionally we get. Sent documents through mail. But yeah, I got the, we have the documents here in front of us, they were emails, um.
But there's no certification paperwork, we need a certification paper that we sign.
It's right here, we have that.
Yeah, it's, it looks like this, it's different than what we're used to. So we have to make one for EverSource for Verizon and town. Right, because normally they do it, they do it for us.
So I would, if, if you want, um. So, um, just, if you wanna do one at a time or just take it up as a package or three plants, if no one else has any questions on.
Alright, we will, we'll discuss them in the street, they're all. They're all on North Blanford and Gore Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, um, Jim. James, one of these plans have two certifications, is that? Do we sign one of those two or is, you wanna both sign, I think there. We couldn't tell here internally if whether or not you wanted one overwritten over the other one or, you know what I mean?
Could you let me know what plan that is, I could take a look at it.
On is five zero two three seven four five, there are. Two, um. Oh, you're gonna call order, order for joint or identical pole locations?
Yeah, order for joint pole relocation.
Really, it's like a two and one, did you want them both signed or?
As far as I know, there should only be one for that, that's, that's for most of the work on Gore Road, um.
I'll just make a motion.
This is discussion now.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Alright. So now you'll just sign those three lines in front of the, uh. So there's three, yeah. Yeah.
No, I've got the ones to be signed.
The signature, it says. Utilities Subcommittee of the City of Blanford, that the, so I thought.
Yeah, we're, we're the Subcommittee.
We don't have a Subcommittee in the bylaws.
No.
Can we change that?
And McCarthy, what they're talking about is the, these documents they sent over was more for like the city form of government where there's a council. Select Board is not a council, or the Select Board is the chief executive authority.
I understand, yeah, I, I'll have to talk to.
I don't know if they sign, I don't know if, if, again, if it's, if it voids what you're trying to do, if it's reflecting the accurate information.
Front of our legal housing. No, no, alright, if, if we sign it, it's done.
I, I have one question, you, you're gonna go under the road with this main line, you're gonna drill in, under North Blanford Road?
Yeah, right around the substation, yes.
Um, there's a, there's a lot of ledge across the street and everything, and our water line is about five feet down. What happens if you hit ledge, what are you gonna do then?
If, uh, blasting is one option, I, I don't, I don't know exactly how they would get around that, but obviously you, you're not gonna be blasting on a water line. Um, they might need to do some kind of, you know, it's not hand digging, but. But some, some manual labor to get the rock out of the way.
Well, I'm, I'm kinda concerned about any of that kind of vibration, not that close to that pipe or. If you guys break that pipe, I, I mean, call me gunshot, but we've already had three incidences of this. Right now, you guys turn away and step back and threw your hands up and said it wasn't your problem. So I'm a little, I'm a little nervous in the water super about you guys drilling that close to a twelve inch water main.
Right.
I mean, the road's not that great as it is, I, I think it'd be a heck of a lot safer. If it was excavated out, you find the main and you went around that main that way. It's not, you're tearing into a new road, but you try drilling that, I mean, I, I, I've seen a company drill through. To a much larger pipe than by sprinkling water and I see one of those.
Right, um. Would it be acceptable if, if, if a condition of this, you know, agreement, this petition would be that they, you know, EverSource needs to provide a plan? Um, plan of action for how they'll approach the water main here, is that, um, that, that, you know, that requires approval by, by you?
I, I, I'd like to have something shown how you're gonna go either over or under our water main, and I'm not too. Too excited about drilling, you know, the exact depth isn't noticed, and you guys coming too low or too high, you're gonna pierce a twelve inch main. And like I said, the last couple times, you guys turned and upon that, left all that financial responsibility for repair on us.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be acceptable, they, they, I, I, I would agree completely with that, like, that it should be their responsibility, EverSource's responsibility if.
Yeah, it should be, but like I said, we've already done this where they pierced through the line three times. They went right to our main and then ripped it out, they ripped the service line out and they ripped a, a smaller line right out of the ground.
So usually what I see when, um, when there are concerns like this is that there, there would be a condition. Uh, like, as part of the petition to say, you know, one of the conditions for procedure, you know, proceeding to work here would be. To be signed off by the, the town water department, um, a plan of action, you know, regarding the water line and how it's gonna be handled. So if that would be acceptable, then, um, I don't think that EverSource would have any objection at all. They, they, they would not have any objection at all for that.
Yeah, I, I think you need, you need to show us some sort of attack, you know, how you're gonna attack that situation, like I said, it's not like it's. That's the main, the main line coming into town. Um, and like I said, the ground's not that deep there and you guys try to go out and you drill. And if you're off a little bit, you're, you're gonna shake that main and we got a huge problem. Right now, we have no backup, our plant is our only source of water, we have no, no reservoir right now, no holy dam.
Um, if you don't wanna proceed, if you don't wanna agree to specifically the underground, um, cable installation. Uh, that, that would be work order five zero two two seven two one, is that on? That's one of the three petitions that we're looking at, is that correct?
Seven two one?
We have, uh, seven four five, two one zero and. Seven two one.
Seven two ones with the underground.
So, um, I understand your concerns there and they're extremely valid, so if, you know, if, if you don't want to approve that particular piece and you. You want EverSource to come back with a plan of action before, uh, approval and not just as a condition of proceeding. Then that specific one, if you were to deny that one, um, you know, that would not give them the right for the underground work there. But the other two would, would cover just the pole work, which we're also petitioning for.
I definitely, I, I definitely request something coming up to show how they're gonna cross that road, because you're, you're way too.
I really think that you should get together with the engineers from EverSource.
Last one, he's just saying.
Go out there. Do what's gotta be done so this job can be done safely.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright.
Now, just a question, is this one all work gonna be done by EverSource or is it gonna be. Petitioned out to a subcontractor?
Uh, the whole work would likely be gone, going out to a subcontractor, I'm not sure about the underground work, um.
Does this work refine, require bonding?
Bonding, sorry?
Well, I mean, you're, you're, you're doing thousands of dollars of work, I'm sure you're, you're gonna be bonded. If you're doing work on our roads or going under our roads.
I'm, I'm not actually sure what you, what you mean, do you mean like insurance?
Yeah, some sort of bond insurance, road bond of some kind.
I'm not actually aware of, of how they approach that, uh, that's not. That's not anything I've ever dealt with, so I, I do not know, um, I'm assuming that they have insurance for the work they do.
Under the shirt, I don't wanna sign this or see anybody sign it. And absolve them of responsibility if they do break that line.
Either break that line or you work down to the road down there, we don't wanna cross.
There, there's a lot to this. This is more than just certain poles.
There, you're going through DigSafe, correct?
Yes, they always use DigSafe, yep.
I don't know, McCarthy, I don't, do, do you, can you understand? The, uh, the frustration on our end a little bit here with, I mean, it sounds like this isn't just your ordinary. You know, it sounds like there's much more to this, and on, on top of that, the paper just, the paperwork just continues to. It's, it's not organized, um, and it just doesn't feel like there's a lot of communication going on and. If, if they go forward and approve this and you, and you, and we've already had issues where we've accepted. Petitions for pole locations to the water superintendent's point where water lines were broken and we had to pay for that, so it's, it's. It's not clear what the plan is, um, and the communication also is not strong either. But I don't know if, I don't know what you wanna do or, or. Is there anything that you can help improve, help make this better and get us on a much stronger path forward so we can support the project?
Um, I mean, yes, I mean, I, I'll have to talk with the people at EverSource who have, you know, that kind of decision making, because I. I'm the engineer of the project for the pole locations and the. I, I, I can't tell you how EverSource will handle things, uh, from a legal standpoint, for, for example, for bonding, um, uh, ensuring their work or. Or, or what have you, I was, I was really here tonight to answer questions about the purpose of the project, um. And, and any, any questions about, you know, what it might look like in the end or, or, or what have you, so, yeah, I understand the frustration. And I'm sorry that I can't answer a lot of these questions, um. It's, yeah, it, clearly somebody else from the resource is probably necessary to answer some of these.
Hey, I strongly feel that we should withhold signing this. Until they come back to us with a plan that will satisfy the water superintendent. The highway superintendent and this board.
Yeah, if you're gonna dig into the roads. And near water lines.
So, until we get that, I, I don't think we should sign any of this.
I, I would make a motion to table it until we get better documentation on what's going to.
I second it.
I have a second.
Got a second?
All right.
Yeah, yeah, second.
I'm sorry, Mr. McCarthy, but we 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 definitely need to be a little clearer on what's gonna happen here.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. It's um, it happens. Yes.
Right, all all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. McCarthy? This is, this is a little on a personal note. Uh, do you know who's in charge of, uh, they were cutting trees down in February. Uh, along the the property lines on Custer Road and they were supposed to remove the trees and they're still there. That, I think Northern had the project. Is there some way you can get us a number to call so we can get those trees cleared from the road before it snow flies?
Um. I can, I can send some, some emails. Um, I don't know who, that's not a project that I was working on, so I don't know really anything about it.
Yeah.
I can let them know that that there's some few concerns. What road is it on?
Custer Road.
Custard?
Chester.
Chester, okay.
Yeah. Um, Dave, this is Dave, uh, I was superintendent. Have you been out on Gore Road lately? Were you pulling, were you gonna put those poles in?
Uh, the last time I was out there was maybe two or three months ago.
Um, did you see any skyline to there at all or not?
Did I see what?
You say like, uh, son? Cause you you go run those poles up through there and that place is pretty, um. Notorious for uh falling trees across wires. Are are your poles on there or those, those trees coming up?
Uh, yeah, well, that's part of the reason, that's part of the reason for the petition because we would need additional, you know, we we wanna shorten the distance between the poles. Um, the new poles that were going in would be, you know, would would be more robust than what's there now. And the construction on Gore Road is what they call a spacer cable or Hendrix, um, which is, it has a a strong messenger above the. Conductors that are actually carrying current and that, you know, will will absorb. Uh limbs that strike it and and it's it's more resilient to tree strikes and. It's often used for that purpose uh for roads like that. And and also ever source would likely need to do a little bit of tree trimming along Gore.
Uh, they're they're doing that right now, doing some tree trimming, but they're they're only running due to side where the water is on, it's just the ball side of it.
Yep.
There are still plenty of huge tall trees out there. In fact, once we remove some trees on one side, it's it's there was a tree to fall over. And uh, that's one of a, I mean, a major roads up through. It wouldn't take much for all those trees to come down and you just land on your wires and it's all shut down for a day or so.
Yeah, and and I mean, that that's always a concern in any area that's forested like this, um. All I could say is that it's with with the new construction that we're proposing, it would be much less likely to come down. And also by bringing this, the main circuit out of the right of way, that's that's back there. It helps, um, you know, obviously it's a lot more accessible, um, when there are issues for them to repair it.
All right, we'll see what happens.
Anymore? Well, I guess we'll move on to. The notice of filing of.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Good night.
Notice of filing public hearing or procedural conference. Petition of N Star Electric doing business is ever source for approval, the referral of major storm threshold. I think if we read this, this is all we can do with no road.
No, this is just communication. Now, you guys know that this is a sound place and uh. Like I, I always select what these things come across my table. I wanna make sure you guys are aware.
Just so everybody heard it, we're looking at it.
The next item we've had here on your agenda, guys, is your, um, the state of design work. Um, one of the uh. Members here for Wright Pierce joining us as well as our water super, answer any questions you might have on this particular project. We're in action, item forty. Number up, whether up or down. Forty. This one here? Pierce. Oh, okay. So this involves the um SCADA upgrade work at the water plant. Um, we, this is that project where the select work is working collaboratively with our enterprise. And trying to fund the upgrades necessary at the water plant to secure the funds. We went through a payment process. Awarded the contract Wright Pierce, it was approved. Then we were going back and forth to try and draft an appropriate contract to bring it from me tonight. For final approval on and signatures, the water commission, I guess, met already, reviewed it, um, and are we to go?
Let's go, Gary.
And then, um, the project manager is here. Again, if you have any particular, um, uh, technical questions regarding the project.
Can I ask questions about something?
Go ahead, this is your show.
First of all, Josh, thank you for the invitation. Gordon, thank you for the invitation and the uh opportunity to speak before the uh Board of Selectmen this evening. So thank you. My name is James Papadimitra. I'm a senior project manager, senior instrumentation and controls engineer with Wright Pierce. Based out of, um, not based out of Westfield, but our our office, the local office right here in Westfield. So as part of a letter that was received by the water department, um, as you know. Um, for, I believe, a violation or or something or a notice, um, they brought us in and we performed an assessment. From that assessment, uh, we put together, which was essentially anywhere between a one and a fifteen percent design document, okay? Um, from that, you can basically come up with a generalized scope and and um. That addressed the client's goals and objectives and essentially at the facility, there's no automated control whatsoever. That was originally done, designed there. It, the, just about, and please correct me if I, if I misspeak, that there is monitoring. Of various equipment, there's monitoring of chlorine, pH.
Cause you had no, no, no automation. There there's some monitoring of your levels going out and what your dosing is going out, but other than that.
It's chlorine, pH. Turbidity.
Always there.
Yeah, and.
That's why we have a lot of the problems we have now is because there is no automation. And like you said, you get a storm change or something like that or whatever. I mean, he's not there, you have no way to catch it.
That's your operator Bernie Saint Martin.
Right, so, right, because, you know, his hour is limited. We're not a twenty-four hour facility, so it just, you just go to violate.
Yeah.
Um. So we did everything there, um, we came back with that project. We're in the process of doing that. We got submitted with a consent by DEP. On top of that, we still, we had to go back and do an entire. Um, system, what do they call it?
Long day. Oh, oh, yeah, no problem. Um, so essentially, when we, when we did the assessment, we found a lot of things that were. I don't wanna say wrong, but as time marched on from the original design. Um, there are certain components of your SCADA system super, which stands for supervisory control and data acquisition. But there's no control element, okay? It's just monitoring and alarming and it's all you have. And as we did our investigation of the SCADA system, it turned out that programmable logic controller. The thing that takes in all the physical signals and I O and alarms is now end of life by the manufacturer, Alan Bradley.
December.
Yeah, so it was December twentieth, uh, December twentieth of twenty twenty. So that product is no longer available directly from the manufacturer. You can buy used product. On the internet, but you're taking a, pardon the expression, to crap shoot.
True for a reason.
Right, it, thank you, good wisdom. Um, so, so we made recommendation, we also found out too that the um. Operating system of the computer, which was Windows seven professional, is also no longer supported. I think it was as of. January of this year.
Yeah.
I think something to that effect. We found a number of other things. It was very valuable that we met with Gordon and Bernie Saint Martin onsite and I. They conveyed all their pain points to us and essentially Bernie has to go there, select the flow. Through his raw water pumps and adjust the speed, look at the flow and try to balance the number and the valve positions. For the uh, for the uh, route, the the sand filters.
Right.
Okay, and I know Bernie said, oh, if I can keep it at this level, I would get really effective sand, uh, you know, filtering out of this. Problem is, that doesn't happen because there's, there's a clear well, right? After that's treated and filtered.
Yeah.
Chemical dosed, which is all again manual, that chemical dosing is all manual. After it's dosed, it goes out to the clear well, correct?
Yeah, and it goes into this town.
Right, so what happens if the clear well now, the demand, basically the clear well is just. A mini, mini storage, if you will, final treatment and storage before it, it's, the demand is taken by the town. So as you know, water usage is not a constant, a constant, so if Bernie sets the flow in the morning. You know, he's gonna really need to come back late in the afternoon to drop the flow, otherwise you can get clear well overflows, which.
Is a violation.
Has occurred.
Another violation.
Okay, so what we did was we picked and we realized there, you know, small town, small community budgetary constraints. We picked the key points to give automation to the water treatment plant that allows for flow pacing and level control through the filters. Automatic um dosing of the chemicals to maintain your compliance and level control out at the clear well to avoid those. So if we see we're getting a high, high level out at, or if we're getting, approaching a high level out at the uh, at the clear well, we can now back out, back down flow. Um, of the raw water pumps feeding the um, uh, the filters.
Right, which saves us money in chemicals, money electricity, saves us water, save, save, save all the way around. On top of it, going through the whole thing, um, we found that our soda ash system, you can't, you can't get anymore. That's been gone out of date for a while now. So we have three pumps, we only use one. We have two because one prepped the bed about five months ago. And um, so we're down to two now. She really can't get a new one because they don't make those anymore. Um, it's a DC system. That's the, and that whole system right there is, you 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 just, you can't get anything for it anymore.
Now, is this system gonna handle, say we have a major fire here in the center of town.
Should ramp up automatically.
That was, but because we can, we can empty that clear well on a fire with no.
Oh, yeah, it should clear, it should ramp up on, on a, it should, what happens is like, so say we have a small break or something like that. That changes, as well as slow down, it should ramp up to a certain point.
Right.
Allow us to bake basically, uh, I mean, the water may not be pretty coming out of it, but you won't, it shouldn't run out. Um, but we'll, you know, we'll get it.
Yeah, I I I think if I could add to that, I I I think to address that particular issue, we would look at the ver, the level, let's say we had a rapid level of drop. You know, we could do a rate of change, you know, in our control system, we can look at rate of changes at various levels to say, okay, we need to bring another filter online. And that could happen with the automated valving that we're proposing, that could happen automatically, okay? We'd have to certainly work with Gordon and Bernie as to what. You know, during the number in our design, we called for a number of different workshops to work with. With the uh, plant personnel in order to make sure we're delivering the design that's gonna meet their needs, not just rubber stamp. And and show something down their throat that's not gonna work for them.
So if right now we're running four filters all the time, we could run two filters. Keep one as full but as a backup and alternate them so they get used. It's gonna prolong our filter life. Like I said, so now, you know, you know, next year we're gonna do filter four, so we can just run filter four all the time. And keep the other ones off, so we're gonna get longer run, better filters, you know, it, they're gonna last a lot longer. So. Um, by doing the consent order. One thing we're looking at too is um, for fire suppression is putting another tank up. S- some sort of a of a tank, so we have some water for like North Street and stuff like that, because right now. You know, we saw what happened, we lost, we had no water in Center Town for fourteen hours. So.
What is the problem with the tank that's up there now?
That air, a sponge has less holes in it and the base has a big crack in the bottom of it. It's, it's junk, which is something we might wanna look at putting that out to bid for scrap. Because with steel being high, maybe a way to make a couple of dollars. And and a couple of dollars to, a couple of dollars coming back to us.
And and forward thinking.
Yeah.
Um, we make sure that our design is capable of being expanded upon or added to for this tank site. So we can look at either cellular communication from the tank site and its localized controls and alarming, right? And and actual level value, okay, and that would get telemetered either through cellular or radio back to the central SCADA site. Where even with remote access and tablets or cell phones, um, the guys can access that uh, that SCADA system. I mean, we would certainly look to do that. The other thing you're gonna do is with this automated control, it's gonna keep you within compliance, minimize electrical. And and chemical usage, but also to allow you to operate with. With alarms that are not nuisance alarms or just general alarms, you'll have alarm specifics that we put in. Okay, that'll dial out on your cell phone and with that, you could make more, you know, either Bernie or Gordon could make more intelligent decisions to say. All right, I know that that pressure switch is a little iffy, I can, you know, just acknowledge it and I'll I'll come in tomorrow. Rather than coming through a more critical alarm that requires immediate attention. So you'll be able to make value judgments uh based on the critical nature of your, of of your alarm. Which is what they don't, I don't believe you have that capability.
No, some of the other things too is even on our turd meters and our chlorine readers, our thing are chlorometer meters still okay, but our turd meters, they don't make them anymore. They, they stopped making those like three years ago, so.
What did you have to?
Uh, uh, everything is out of date. It's, it's crazy.
Well, we, that, that's.
That's in there too.
Scare me, because I'm I'm thinking now, uh, we all know the way technology moves. You know, today you have one thing, tomorrow you got something better. I'm watching, I'm wondering about the longevity of what, what we're doing. And uh, how, how do we keep up with the technology? That as it advance, or is this something that once it's set up, we can expand upon? Or is it something that once it's set up and a new technology comes in, we're stuck with another bill?
Half, half the problem was, is it should have never been a manual plan in the first place. They went cheap in the beginning. And now we gotta pay, now we gotta pay for it. If it was just this, I think we looked at half of it, I think a good third of the budget, you know, ha, almost half the budget. Is just on wiring for automation. Once it's wired for automation and you have the valves and everything else in there, you just gotta worry about your, you know. Keeping your SCADA system upgraded and stuff like that. But the problem is, is a lot of it is, is the, we we don't have any automated valves. We don't have anything automated, period. Everything is.
Manual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I.
I understand that, I and and.
I wanna adjust your issue, your, your direct question, if I can jump in on. I wanna adjust your issue, your, your direct question, if I can jump in on this. So you ask about, you know, are we gonna get another bill five, ten years down the line? Nothing, nothing is lasts forever, as you know that. You have component, what's that?
I plan to.
Okay, well, well, I should say, nothing, nothing stays the same and nothing lasts forever, but. Specific components of SCADA systems have an average life cycle. Okay, so like for example, um, PLCs, the PLC that's in there is at least uh. Over fifteen, I think it's over fifteen, when did they do the upgrade?
Oh four.
In oh four, but that, that PLC was in existence many years before oh four. So let's just say, let's just say it was two thousand, okay?
Yeah.
I didn't do, well, here we are, twenty twenty one, it's got a twenty year life cycle.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm, I'm not arguing. You know.
Yeah.
As we move forward, now you're talking, putting in wiring and, and a computerized system and this, that, and the other thing. And I'm wondering if the system that you're putting in is gonna be. Like, okay, this computer system is obsolete now, we just disconnect the wires, we're able to put in a new system. I'm, I'm just curious.
I, I, I feel that what they're doing now. This is a whole pile of stuff.
Oh yeah.
Where as we go down the line, you have to replace this piece. And then further on, this piece, it's not gonna happen again all at once.
No, no, I, I understand that. I'm just wondering, like, you know, cell phones now, every time I get a new cellphone, I got a different picture.
No, it's not, it's, it's not like that, it's not like you have to stay on the edge of technology, the bleeding edge of technology. There's nothing like that pushing you towards new components.
Yeah.
What it basically is the availability of the, the man, first of all, the marketing need. And then the availability of the components within that device.
Yeah.
All right, now, I know a number of different manufacturers have obsoleted because. The um, the memory chip that goes in there is no longer manufactured. Or the controller for the communications chip inside that controller is no longer manufactured. So they don't support it and they move you to a new product. The product that's going in there is a new product that will last fifteen to twenty years, okay? That PLC, and we're putting what, uh, to minimize on the wiring, we're doing what they call a remote I O cabinet. So instead of running the wires, let's say I'm the brains of the outfit, right? And then, and all the instruments are out there in the hallway. Well, instead of running a million wires out there, I'm gonna run one communication, or actually two communication wires out. To another device that's out there, that's gonna take all the physical wires in. So it's a lot cheaper, I'm saving on the electrical costs to do that. The instruments have a life cycle. The computers, the, the, the biggest, your biggest issue and life cycle issue that you're gonna run into is your actual computer. Because the life cycle of those computers, right, has to be matched with two things. Has to be matched with SCADA software and the operating system. Okay, so let me explain. So now Windows seven is no longer supported. So we have to get a new operating system, because if it crashes, what do you do? Right, you need to support your system, so, so we have to operate, uh, upgrade to Windows ten. Right, that's their latest software, operating system for the computer. Thankfully, the computer you have there can take Windows ten. We're upgrading the memory, which is inexpensive, where we may upgrade the network interface card, so. That computer can still be reused, but now that they've updated the operating system, now I have to update your SCADA software. Because your SCADA software doesn't. Uh, where, where, it doesn't operate on Windows ten, so we have to go from your factory talk SCADA software. Because it's now become obsolete, because I just upgraded to Windows ten, it doesn't work on it anymore. It's just a lot of this stuff is interwoven, so the software now has to get upgraded to the version eleven that you have. Or, or that you'll need to get. Those life cycles, normally the SCADA software, you enter into what they call a maintenance contract. So every year or once or twice a year, if you pay in the maintenance contract, it allows technical support. And during that support period, you get upgrades. Okay, it's, it's a part of normal maintenance of your SCADA system, okay? The remote I O unit that, that separate or distant control panel that I'm putting in there. That's gonna be the absolute latest and greatest, okay? So that when the compute of, of, the existing CPU. Fifteen years from now, right, goes and becomes obsolete. Then I could obsolete a, a new one, but put it in a different location, so I'm already building in. Uh, let's call it obsolescence awareness, okay? So that it would be inexpensive to upgrade, or less expensive to upgrade the system. And it'll be expandable at the plant, so now, right now, to keep the cost down, uh, we were directed to. To uh, add the, the automated valves, okay, uh, to add uh, level instrumentation on the uh. On the filters and level at the clear well, and I think one flow meter, we're gonna be at. And so that is approximately forty nine, fifty thousand dollars worth of instruments, that would be the latest.
There's turbines in there too.
Yeah, I, I don't know on that one, but the, in phase two, the phase two instruments was the turbidity meters now. And, and I wanna address that because, and then especially what you just said about the soda ash.
Yeah.
Right, so, I, which I wasn't aware of at the time, so right now, our estimate for. I think the construction cost was approximately a hundred and eighty, but remember that was per one to fifteen percent design. So we use the A A C E standardization method for cost estimating. Uh, these types of systems, so that hundred and eighty, I could be, I can go as low as. Minus fifteen to thirty percent on the low side and up to plus twenty or fifty percent on the high side.
Okay.
All right, so the point is, if, you know, we budgeted for a certain amount and we only use. Um, let's say, you know, let's say we, we use like thirty thousand dollars less than that, or guess what, we can get the turbidity meters. Right?
Yeah.
So, so those are some of the things that we're gonna definitely be looking at, for sure, yeah. The alarming system that we wanna put in. Is one that if you ever expand on additional controls, um, works great with, let, let's say. You, there's also risk of these systems, and you have to balance that with cost benefit analysis, and you can put redundant. SCADA computers that if one fails, a secondary computer automatically takes over. While the alarming systems of yesteryear like Win nine one one don't work well anymore with redundant servers. That's why we're going, we're recommending Topview software, which works excellently with redundant servers. So if Gordon says, hey, look, we had lightning strikes and, you know, it took out the PC, we're gonna. We're gonna make recommendations to put surge suppression on your, on your computers and your PLC. But um, if that computer goes down, what happens? You don't even, you don't get alarms, but we are gonna keep the backup RACO, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so you will get an alarm system out, but if that happens, you may consider at a future time to say, okay, I wanna add a redundant server. So that if the one fails, it goes back, your alarming system will already be set up for that. So.
Contradict, well, you understand this, not deep.
Yeah, try to hear.
Just let you guys know that, again, so this contract you'll approve tonight.
It's for the design.
Is the design based to get us to.
Yeah. Well, I can figure in here when I was looking around for, was about even million dollars for that.
Uh, no.
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 Let's say right now too. On the se- on the second part we're doing, with the consent order with, with Marius. For the distribution, he's also applied for um, three or four grants with us.
Designer shows in space obtained professional liability insurance policy.
Well, I thought that was insurance, you gave me a heart attack.
Yeah.
One of those brands that Marius was applying for, the S, S.
Uh, yeah, Marius, um, who's a, a, a water lead, uh, water engineer in Western Mass, he works in Connecticut as well. Uh, he was looking at S R F and one other one.
He's, he's looking at three or four.
Yeah, yeah, so he's looking to, to, to try to get fund, help out with the funding on that. I, I don't know if, you know, we, we'd have to talk to him, but I don't know if he's looking for a grant. Um, we may not be able to get a grant, but certainly low interest loan to help offset. And I know you mentioned you had already procured funding.
Well, so financing this project's not a problem, definitely is a priority, and there are funding sources to cover this.
Yes.
Um. We have funds.
Well, that's, that's terrific, yeah.
Oh, but just wanna, this, this has been over a year in the making to get to this part.
Yeah, just.
I wanna get the ball rolling.
I think at this point, uh, I would make a motion to accept this contract agreement. And get this ball rolling.
Second. You made the motion, right? You make the motion?
I made the motion.
And it's got a timeline, so I'm happy.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you can go to work.
You have that, do you have the original contract?
Yeah, Tom has all the originals.
I have a question here. Who was the, is it gonna be the water department or the slotman?
They'll be working with the water department.
So maybe they would be the awarding authority.
No, so the way it's designed currently will.
He's talking about signing, Josh.
No, you're signing.
Same question I asked.
Hey, you wanted to be chair.
No, not me.
Yes, we meet and go over it then, and we bring it to you guys, kinda like we're doing now, cause you guys are the signing authority.
And we, we had this conversation with, so all.
There's only one place to sign.
Oh, I'm glad you did it.
Something the space bar is stuck.
All town contracts come to the select board. The select board, you're more of an accountability board, but the due diligence stays with the departments. Departments bring forward the result of the due diligence and just make sure that all laws and rules are complied with. And things are good, and that appropriation's been, um, secured, and we're not. Funding anything that's not, we're not proving anything that there's no appropriation.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I follow.
So it's just, we're an accountability board to make sure that all your doubts are in the right place. And I'm the last person who wanna make a comment or anything. Um, so just sign that, I'll, you want us?
I should do that.
Email to you?
Yes, you could scan it and email it, or send us a copy, however you normally would do it, it's fine.
I think our town council already signed it to approve.
Right.
I can make it, I can scan and email to you.
Yes, that'd be perfect, uh, you're convenient. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, much appreciated and uh. Right.
A learning experience.
The reason why he's been able to get as detailed as he was, cause the water department and them have been working really hard and. And doing a preliminary assessment.
Yeah, that's what I say, this has been a year to make.
Gordon was actually doing something, and he wasn't here too from the hip either.
One of the big problems we had with the plant was like, take filters. Nobody ever did anything to, nobody did nothing in the plant, that's the problem we're having, like. When I, you know, when somebody left and, and I moved into the position there, you know, as a chair there. I got these going there like three years ago, and that's when we started, we had to clean two filters. The town does not realize that, when I, when everything got dumped in my lap. Those filters were only putting out nine gallons a minute, we almost ran out of water. They put out over ninety gallons a minute each.
Yeah, were you inherited a dynasty over there?
Dinosaur, is that what you meant?
And that too, but I'll, I'll, I'll tell you this, if twenty five million dollars is cheap, I want your wall.
That ain't twenty five million, this would be done for.
Plant.
The plant. No, that wasn't the plant, and let me tell you right now, if I was on there when they were doing that. There'd be a lot of things that would have been different, no need for two bathrooms, that domestic water system is. Extremely oversized, um, and expensive to maintain. When it breaks, it's not cheap. Um, that, that whole chemical system in there for the, the soda ash is. Was antiquated when they put in, that plant went online, it was out of date. Oh, pretty much, they put a new paint job on a used Cadillac, they charge a prime or one. Um, that, that, they didn't insulate the building, the roof's not insulated. So, there's another thing too, we looked into that, that, and the thing is, cost affecting this to do it, it's just, it's.
There's no, no alarms for, if he's in there. Screw around with a chlorine and something breaks, there's no alarms to alert us.
Exactly. There's, there's nothing there, there's no emergency, no emergency buttons to hit, there's nothing. So we're working with them now too to try to get rid of ozone, cause ozone can kill you too.
Sure.
Um, it's been off for a while, the system's old and antiquated, um, that's been nothing but a money bet. So, but right now, it's, we, we, we're just pointing now, we just, that's what it is, it just needs.
Progress.
Progress, it doesn't work. Um, all right.
Forty, oh, sorry.
Forty.
Forty.
Review and take action between the town and Eric Kinscher CPA for our best twenty two municipal accounting services. So even I miss maintenance things, I dropped the ball on this one for some reason, I thought we already had reviewed this contract.
You know what you're talking about, when I, I appointed, because all department supervisors get appointed at the end of June. So that's what you saw, was just appointment papers.
But I, but I wasn't impressed, and we did this until, until Eric Kinscher, she wants to say, hey. What do you leave off, and then they backtrack, or they realize they never. Nevertheless, um.
Com- comment right now.
Eric, he's, he's been doing a good job for so long.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't see why we oughta change you at this point, so. I move, we approve this contract with Eric Kernsher. Well, Kinscher, I'll get it, or be patient. Chief there.
There you go.
Any discussion?
So the difference between this contract and our previous contract, before we were contracted directly with. Yeah, so it's saving. Right, so this contract here, we're contracted directly with CPA.
Very good.
We're saving about four hundred million dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
This other uh, action item, review and take action on the proposed amendments to R R G contract, this you did review. Nevertheless, um. Harold, who's the principal assessor at R R G, came back with some amendments to the scope, which he went over with, um, the chairman of the assessment already. And Steve, um. As reported that he was okay with, um, the change, the change, okay, so you can see it there. There, here, you'll see where it says, original, original bullet.
Yeah.
And the replacement. Replacement bullet, so that's the original. Was, you know, the original contract, and then he wants to replace it with, what you see as replacement bullet. Um.
Well, I guess, in order to make a motion that we accept this contract uh with. Regional Resource Group.
Yeah, with the replacement bullet. Then, I make the mo- the motion, or you second it, or?
I'll serve this.
Okay, he made the motion, you second it.
All right, great, fine, and then discussion.
Any merit?
Question from Merrick.
Yeah, um, I don't understand why they wanna do a comprehensive townwide property data review each year preceding a full rebound. Um. As I understand it, we do a third of the town every year.
That's why it's a three-year contract.
It's a three-year thing.
Yeah.
So. What, what is this? I guess, what?
They're gonna do a review of the data, as I understand it. And then when the, the three-year time is up, they'll have all their ammunition lined up, the shoe batteries with.
The original bullet reads, conduct inspections of not less than a hundred properties, and the replacement would be comprehensive townwide property data review. Um. And we'll still continue to read there, that's, that's the strategy they wanna undergo. This is, this contract amendment, just to let you guys know that this is the. Third year of the three-year contract. The board of assessors, this current fiscal year will be going, will be doing a rebid, which they can obviously put in the goals of. For another three-year term. But nevertheless, what they wanna do in this, our our existing three-year contract that ends this year. Is change, is make an amendment to the scope. On the practice of how they um. Uh, conduct inspections or come up with their assessments.
But it's still gonna be a three, three-year assessment process.
It says, come to be carried out once every five years.
Five years.
Wow.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Is this gonna cost us any more money?
Well, no, this is our, our contract dollar amount, you'll see in the second or third page, depending on what package you have. Um, you'll see the columns, fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-two. This is what they bid it three years ago. So fiscal year twenty-two is forty-eight eight eighty.
Okay.
So that's it.
Yeah.
That's the flat, yeah. So we knew three years ago what the, what this year's, but you know, just for budgeting purposes, the purpose is better plan for how we prioritize funding. But nevertheless, um. This year, we'll be going through the bidding once again, which they'll have some of their proposals for another three years. And that's all I have for action items for you guys.
Well, uh.
No, we got putting.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, this is.
Not approved, good.
So this is what I'm calling a late file order, I just got this on my desk today. From the gentleman that owns, um. Thomas Feeling. Uh, Pudding Hill Farm LLC. I guess, um. Uh, the CCC did not like the name micro business. They want it in its place marijuana cultivator. So, that whereas paragraph that you read under the amendment. Actually, when you follow that, you'll see the original writing. Where it says marijuana micro business. So we wanna replace that with marijuana cultivator. So that's the amendment to the original agreed upon post community.
Uh. I I'm a little confused, is this gonna be a full-time cultivation, or?
They submitted a a major proposal.
Yeah.
It's just that when they submitted their, their, you know. Their application to the CCC to go through the process.
Mm-hmm.
Um. How it read was, the company intends to utilize the property located at one Julius Hall Road. For the purposes of operating as a. Micro. Marijuana micro business.
Yeah.
And the CCC came back and said, yeah. We don't like the word marijuana micro business, we want marijuana cultivator. So it's just replacing the name of that, all right. The actual logistics of the process, that's a conversation with them, I don't, I don't know what their proposals are, they still have to go to the planning board. Through the permitting, they still have to do all of that. But this is uh the amendment to what, what the select board negotiated earlier on, up to the post-community agreement.
Okay.
Which, which the CCC requires before. They give the go-ahead with their projects.
So we got the ball on it?
Any am- any changes to the original agreement yet?
Yeah.
You gotta sign it too. You'll even get to sign it.
You guys decided this time.
I don't see where it says TJ on it.
It's gonna be right there.
Yeah. So I move, I move to accept the name change. From uh, or make the um. What, how do you want it?
To accept the amendment as presented?
All right. I I make a motion to uh. Accept the, the amendment as presented.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, you, you got the sign.
Arrow would be proud of it, and don't forget to do the earlier minutes.
Yeah, that's what I'm about to.
Very cheap.
The which?
They didn't do the minutes.
No, they, they have six A as well, review the expense report.
I can't hear you.
File department, review the six, six A, if you wanna continue going, so you don't have to make a motion to move. Do six A, and then we can go to the top of the agenda and do the minutes.
You know, we're so new into the year, this is a waste of time.
Yeah, full transparency though, it's there, but however you wanna run your meeting. You can review it, you can skip it.
I, we went over it last week. Uh, so I would take a good wait. For the next two weeks, we'll go over it again.
The next two weeks, you'll have a fresh one in front of you.
Well, we'll go over that.
Now.
I I, that's all I feel.
I I agree. We're, we're too fresh in the year right now.
Making a motion to table?
Yeah.
I mean, it's scary, you looked at it. Good job.
All right.
Go forward. Okay.
There's a truck out there. On the baseball field.
No, he's on the road.
No, he just went on them. He just got that on it.
Turning around, maybe? I hope he's not dropping off another stump there.
Okay. Two A.
Hey Bobby, wanna run out and get his license number for me?
Yeah.
So Tom, back up to two A. Examination of the July nineteenth meeting.
Okay. Uh.
And Josh, these meeting minutes that they're. Waiting to approve right now, um, they have to be signed by finance as well, but we'll just deal with that at another time, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't hear that.
No, she was just, the question you had about finance, maybe reviewing earlier on, she was just asking about that.
Remember I said, because they need to sign it, but they're not here tonight, so we'll get you to sign it, and then we'll get them at their meet, their next meeting.
I I only got one question. Who would see some so- smellier?
Did I spell it wrong? Kathy Smeller.
Smeller.
She's on the finance.
Okay. I saw the C and I said, geez, that can't be attended. Merrick, stop it.
Harold Smeller.
Ooh.
I was bawking.
They go in. Notice that Instagram. Yeah, I'm gonna follow, I'm sure. Sounds like a good idea to me, how about you?
I move to. Accept the meetings as written.
Would they?
July nineteenth.
Okay, second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I would, in reading it, I would like to make a motion to accept the. Minutes of August second.
Second.
Discussion. For me, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess we're going, huh?
Yeah. Um.
What do you got, Jar?
Uh, just I have something that's up in my head. Not there now, it's gone.
It's gonna be, you said air, but.
You're gonna call it, meeting adjourned at?
Well, wait a minute, I I wanna. I wanna.
I'm sorry.
At some point, we're gonna have to do something, because this is a safety thing, and uh. I don't know, you know.
Mark, M and M's is a little more complete than the other one.
Oh, he's, he's a contract and he's. It's, his is what, time and stock?
Well, it's a, it's a proposal, if you've signed it, it's a contract, that's all I'll.
You know, it's, you know, it's.
We have some contracts.
See, I, it's just proposals, right? And I was deciding, the only thing that concerns me is, is that. You know, the way this is written. If there's cost overruns, the town picks up the tab, the other one is. It's cut and dry, if there's overruns, he has to pick up the tab. And.
What contracts are you talking about, TJ?
For the, for the, the road repairs.
The road.
The stuff, the stuff that Walden brought in last week. The, the, um, quotes that, he's been asked, he's been asked by you guys to do new quotes, has he given you those?
That's what he's gotten, they're the same thing.
They're the same, they're the same folks.
Oh, sorry, all right.
So.
Did they not understand what you were looking for?
Well, we were looking for them to be more specific.
Yeah. But it didn't come.
Didn't happen.
No. But my, my concern now is, is that. We're, we're coming into the hurricane season now, we've been in it for about a month, and we've had torrential rains. And, you know, I I just wanna see the, the roads erode. Any longer than what they have, I, you know, the way I feel, give one road to one guy, the other road to the other guy and be done with it.
Well, he said. Repair the Chester Road are estimated five to seven days.
Yeah.
At eighteen hundred. Worst case scenario, seven days, eighteen hundred twenty-seven. Twelve thousand six hundred, what was this one? I think he found that one there, yeah. Virchill Road. Five thousand five hundred. Oh. Well, okay, so that was.
Yeah.
And then, and the debt for both of them. So fifteen thousand five hundred plus five thousand five hundred, or that's totally, that's. Total.
No, I think you're right, I think that's the total, or that, that's. That's the Virchill Road, and that's the Chester Road.
He was looking at, um. Twenty-one hundred dollars.
Hundred and twelve, one thousand.
And there. Twelve thousand six hundred for Virchill. For Virchill and Chester Road. Cause he's saying eighteen hundred dollars per day. Now, including many excavators, dirt dump trucks, so the service trucks. The daily rate does not include the cost for any material necessary or traffic control measures. We will collect. I guess it warrants further discussion, but.
I would think so. Sounds like, but I would like, I would like to see us uh get moving on it.
What, what are you sharing?
So this proposal here, and I'm just. I have to connect with Walden and learn more about. What, what you guys got going on, but nevertheless. He's charging eighteen hundred dollars per day. Five to seven days, so seven days, let's say worst case scenario. Is that now for both roads? Both roads.
That's ten thousand, twelve hundred.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand six hundred dollars total. Repairs necessary at Virchill, oh, okay. The repairs necessary for Virchill are estimated two to three days. And then Chester is five to seven days.
Who, who's this that?
That M and M's.
For total?
So we're looking at eighteen thousand for both roads, worst case scenario.
M and M's.
M and M's. But that's, that's not including though, he says here, what you say, material and. Detail work. Yeah, any traffic control measures that you might need.
And what was Cooper's?
Now, Cooper was fifty-five hundred for Virchill Road and fifteen thousand five hundred for Chester Road.
So M and M's much favorable, but to your point about cost overruns.
That's, and, and that's something that we, sure. You know, I. I don't know, I. I know that, like.
I work with, you look, can I work with Walter on this?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm yeah, I'll put Walter on this. But I see what's going on, um. You consider with the foundation of this road. So it was.
He's gonna use the, he's, what, the way I understand it, the way that was written, is he's gonna use that. Material that, that's already there.
Yeah, he's gonna try to.
To, to back it up against the road and then bring in more rigraft to uh. Make the ditch. Cause that ditch is way too narrow. You know, for the monterey.
This was a club, they showed you the.
It was all that was. It's all the space that was given when they went in the road though.
Yeah. But then, of course, when they did that timbering further off. You know, that, that added a lot of.
But see, they, they didn't cut the bank at all, when they went in the road to make the ditch anyway.
Yeah. So they gotta cut the bank wider now.
Yeah, so you can't, if you're gonna do that, you can't do it for that kind of ones.
Well, for fifteen thousand, I don't know.
No, I know damn well you can't.
Well.
Cause if you go in there and, and cut the bank. You're gonna take away everything that's there now. And that is all gonna be replaced.
Uh, I'm just.
Yeah, talk, 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 the price is pretty close though, I gotta say, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty close, that's the ballpark, what we need to do.
Yeah.
So they're going back again?
Well, we're gonna talk with Dave, the highway person, we're done about it.
Yeah. These carer wouldn't be proud of us, we, we went over the eight o'clock mark.
Yeah, well, are we all set now? Meeting adjourned at eight ten.
Bang and dabble, make it official.
Where's all the? I work at some place.